Happy New Year and thank you for those of you joining us live on DGA. Ms. Phillips, may we please have a roll call?
Counselor Baxter, present. Counselor Patine.
Here.
Counselor Noseworthy, present. Mayor Pro Tim Brooke.
Here.
Mayor Yousaf.
Here.
City Council, do we have any actual perceived conflicts of interest this evening? Seeing none, okay. We will move on to public participation. If you have not signed up, please do so now. This is an opportunity to provide comments or ask questions for items that do not otherwise appear on the agenda. We are limiting comments to three minutes. Counselor Patine will be our timer and he will kindly raise his hand at two and a half minutes to warn you that your time is almost up. We don't mean to be distracting, but we do want to run efficient meetings. And with that, may I have Ms. Karen Pontius, please.
We're going up here.
Okay, great.
Carolyn Hunter? Yes, thank you. I'm the next one on the list.
You guys can announce your names and addresses at the podium.
Is there a mic over there? It's just right above you.
Oh, okay, good. All right. Carolyn Hunter, 1743 West Second Avenue, resident of the city of Durango.
And I'm Karen Pontius, 288 Animus View Drive, trailer number 51 in Durango and the city.
And we, I have two announcements, but our first one is we are producing the Third Annual Durango Women's March. The theme is #WomenRising2020. Come celebrate the 100th anniversary of women's right to vote. We'll meet in front of the Durango train station at 10:30 in the morning on Saturday, January 18th. And then we start marching at 11:00 a.m. We march up to Buckley Park. And if you don't want to march, you can come and just cheer us on. And then at Buckley Park, we have a rally with five very insightful speakers. And we will be providing warm drinks, so you know, you won't get cold in the snow. This is all, everyone's welcome, including men. This is a family-friendly, free event. And we're asking people to bring a sign, but to have a positive message stating what you are for and staying away from what we're against. Okay? And this is cosponsored by Indivisible Durango, Planned Parenthood, and the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship. And Karen is displaying her very nice pink hat. And so if you have a pink hat like that, you're welcome to wear it.
Or any hat.
Or any hat, yeah. Dress warmly. Anything else?
I think that's it. And then you have another announcement.
Yeah, I have another quick announcement. Thank you. Yeah, so all of you can consider coming to that. And this is a thank you announcement from NINA, Neighbors in Need Alliance. And we would like to thank the city council especially for providing the seed money, which was $6,000, a matching grant for us to design and get built new lockers for the homeless. We'd also like to thank the city staff, including Kevin Hall and Dirk Nelson, for helping us get the best site available. It's really a great site at the Transit Center and it has a roof. You know, it saved us thousands of dollars. It's got a concrete slab under and a roof over. It's got security cameras. So we really appreciate all the efforts that everyone did to help us get this far. And I spent Christmas break approving the final shop drawings for these lockers. And we're told they'll start fabrication in a few short weeks. And of course, we told them sooner the better. So we're looking to install them this spring. And we believe these six new lockers, which are specially designed for the demands of outdoor weather and bears, and also from materials that will retain a good appearance over the years. We believe they're key in helping unhoused people in our community maintain a steady job and transition back into self-sufficiency. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you so much for your efforts and work.
Sure.
Thank you.
Rick Cobb.
Uh, Rick Cobb, 276 Oxbow Circle. And I think you know where my neighborhood is. It's Three Springs. And that's basically three words from me. Three Springs 2020. Okay, I'll say a few more words. I was encouraged to see a couple of Three Springs projects arising higher in the capital improvement projects for consideration of 2021. So that includes perhaps some outdoor pickleball courts as well as a smart 160 East Trail Extension. I will be here every month. I'll be at Parks and Rec every month just to keep those in the forefront. So particularly in the light of not knowing what will happen with the 20 or 2005 tax if that does not get approved. I mean, at what point do new projects get approved versus having to go to maintenance mode? So there's a, there's a finite window, I think, of opportunities for these types of projects. You know, you figure you've got 20 million bucks to spend in five years before, if that tax doesn't get approved. And now, when do you hit that tipping point? We can't afford to buy new stuff. We have to maintain what we have. So I want these projects in the next five years. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your continued advocacy. We have two presentations tonight. Moving on to our first one with Trails 2000, Ms. Mary Monroe Brown.
So it is my pleasure to introduce Mary Monroe Brown. She's the Executive Director of Trails 2000. As you know, Trails 2000 has been in our community for 30 years. And it's been a wonderful partnership over those years with not only Mary, but Trails 2000 as a whole as an organization. She's going to provide you with a recap of all the great work Trails 2000 has done for our community in 2019.
Thank you, Kathy.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Thanks for the introduction. Thank you. I appreciate being here. Thank you, Madam Mayor and the council for the opportunity to present a brief recap of our trail work for 2019. Happy New Year. As you know, the mission of Trails 2000 is to plan, build, maintain trails, educate trail users, and to connect the community. We've been doing that since 1990, when a few local people had the idea that they really wanted to preserve the opportunity to have trails. That was Bob Allen, Mike Vinnie, and Scott Fleming, who conceptualized the idea for Trails 2000. I would like to take a minute to honor one of our founders, who was Ed Zink. Would Trails 2000 wouldn't be here today without Ed's encouragement and support and ideas to bring Trails 2000 forward with the idea that we would work with all land managers to plan, build, and maintain trails. We miss him greatly, and I just wanted to take a minute to recognize all of his contributions. As you know, we maintain the city's trail network. And maintenance has changed over the years. And part of our goals in, in maintenance is to constantly upgrade the type, the style of maintenance that we're doing to current standards. So we're upgrading our style of grade reversals and grade dips and bench cuts so that we're creating sustainable trails that encourage drainage on the trail network. All of this requires partnerships. We value our partnerships and our partnerships with the city in particular is symbiotic in that the city is working through the sales tax dollars to purchase the open space and then partners with Durango Trails 2000 to plan, build, and maintain those trails. And we very much appreciate that partnership. So thank you for that opportunity for our continued work. One of our key projects in 2019, and will remain a key project in 2020, will be the completion of the Sky Raider Trail. It connects part of Sky Ridge up to Raider Ridge. And so it's the combination of those names. That's the Sky Raider Trail. It's been a lot of work. It's been entirely hand-built, hand-cut. Our original proposal did not include that, but we made some amendments and hand-built the entire trail. So it's been a very big effort and our goal is to complete that in 2020. As part of our partnership, we partner with all kinds of groups, school groups, neighborhoods, the public, to deliver over 3,500 hours of volunteer trail work to our area land managers. We had the pleasure of working with the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council this year. Fantastic group of kids from Durango High School who followed up, were very organized, attended, had a great attitude. So thank you. We appreciate that participation. Another trail project we completed this year was a project called Down &amp; Out. In Horse Gulch, there are a few trails that are called the Progressive Ridge and Down &amp; Out is part of that ridge. And so it was an old road cut, completely unsustainable, lots of drainage issues. So we were able to rehabilitate that, improve the drainage, and then in addition, provide a great trail experience. We have had great feedback from the community around that, who have thanked us and really appreciate that style of trail work because it's a little bit different than what we have been doing. In addition, on the Progressive Ridge is a trail called Rocky Road, which we also enhanced. And that's the access to the whole Progressive Ridge, Snake Jarmer Medicine, Milky Way. And so that project was also completed. We also did a project on Ned's Hill, which is in Overend. And we did a unique project. You can see in this photo, these are called vertical Gabion baskets. And so it's basically a fencing material that's filled with rocks, the rocks that are on-site. And it allows the reduction in sediment and it creates a great drainage opportunity. And then on the left, you can see we improved the bench cut. So it provided two things, which was improvement in drainage and then access for the community. We completed the Three Springs Trails. David knows about that. And so that's a trail network of almost 10 miles of trails. And that now connects into the Grand View Trail Network into the BLM. So that's a very nice amenity and the Three Springs neighborhood was fantastic to work with. We also did some work on the NICA course. As you know, the NICA is the high school league course on Ewing Mesa. We built that last year for the state championships. You probably know Durango High School team won the team's standings. Animus also participated in both teams. Their students rode their heart out. It was a windy weekend, cold weekend, but we had probably 1,200 racers on-site and visitors from all over the state to Durango. And we received very positive reception about the trails there. One of our key tenants is to educate the next generation of trail stewards through our Trail Kids program. So this is a picture of a group from Mountain Middle School. And we worked with a variety of middle schools in the 9R district this season to inform the kids about where the trails came, come from, how to maintain the trails and care for the trails so they can be better trail stewards when they become adults. We have hired and trained paid crew leaders who lead the volunteers. They're vibrant ed- we have a smart team that does a very wonderful job leading volunteers throughout the community. And that's an important key tenant of how we work. We raise money and then we hire the crew leaders. The crew leaders then mobilize the volunteers and we contribute, as I said, about 3,500 hours of volunteer trail work each season through this format. Going back to additional community partnerships and who we work with throughout the, the community, lots of groups. And then I want to talk a little bit about the importance and the value of outdoor recreation. It's being realized all over the United States. There are now 15 states that have official offices of outdoor recreation. The value of outdoor rec in the United States is 4% of the gross domestic product. The state of Colorado values it as $40 million. And we're hoping to work with Fort Lewis to determine the value in our area. As you know, we measure in plainments, train tickets, sales tax, ski tickets, lodger's tax, but we don't really know the value of who's coming here for trails because the trail experience is not charged. You know, we, we benefit from the sales tax in order to put that back into our public lands, but we're really trying to get a better number on who's coming here and how they're using the benefits of outdoor recreation. Our new Visit Durango director is here and that's an important part of what they're doing. And they'll be launching a new website to talk about outdoor recreation and showcase all the beauty of the San Juans and what Durango and La Plata County has to offer in the way of outdoor recreation. All of our work requires, as again, this partnership, the trails, investment by the city is over 2,000 acres of public lands. And this map shows how they're around the entire town. That provides easy access for the community to basically get out of their cars and walk and ride and improve their health through this easy access to trails. Trails are the gateway to outdoor recreation. No matter what you're choosing to do, you're getting there via a trail. The investment by Trails 2000 of the trail work, the, the value is at $28 an hour. So it's a conservative return on investment for the city of around $140,000 for your investment for what you're doing. Conservatively valued just on the volunteer aspect of what we do. In addition, we can't do any of this without communications. And so we have a Trail Talking newsletter, social media on all platforms, a website. We're launching a new website last, next year that will be much more focused on outdoor recreation opportunities. So it'll be kind of like a clearinghouse of all the outdoor things you can do in our area. We have our trail conditions report to let people know what's going on. We include the seasonal wildlife closures. We try and do all we can to have a very informed trail community. And we think that is one of the reasons we have a very high share of the trail ethic and a very low trail conflict. Because people understand and have empathy that, you know, we have runners, we have bikers, we have dog walkers, and what, and most of us do all those things. So what you might be doing one day, you're going to do something else the next day. And so that leads to a compassionate, accepting trail community. So I just want to say thank you again for all of your support. We appreciate your support and understanding of the heavy lifting we do for the community. And we can't do it, as I said, without this partnership. We really enjoy working with the city staff, with the Parks and Recreation staff. And so we just want to thank you for that. Do you have any questions?
Questions, comments, council?
I'd just like to jump in and thank you and the board and all of those volunteers and their 5,000 hours and every effort that you make in the community. It's, it's kind of unbelievable every year that you come here and you present to us how much work you've done. It's always almost shocking, the progress that you make. And, and we know it's such a great value for the community and really appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you. It's a full team effort.
I'd like to add also that I know when Sheriff Smith had a call for volunteers to help move the homeless here, you had volunteers there giving instruction and making all the equipment available. And I just thought it was a wonderful demonstration of partnership. So thank you.
Sure, of course. Thank you very much.
Mary, I want to thank you for your leadership. And you're, you've done an amazing job collaborating with the entire community. So thank you so much for all that you do and that you bring.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Okay, moving on to the library. Samir, when I pull up my presentation here. Good, Mary Yousaf, council. Thank you for having me here. I'll go as quickly as I can because I know your time is valuable. But I'm here to give you just information about the library that you may not know. So our mission is to enrich the community by providing an environment where information abounds, ideas flow, and imagination thrives. That's what we strive to do every day with all the activities that we do at the Durango Public Library. Our main library is 4,280 square feet. It opened in December 2008 and is LEED Gold Certified. Okay, so I have a question for you. What do you think a public library does? Give me something.
Communication hub.
What was that?
Communication hub.
Communication hub?
Resource.
Resource?
Place to gather.
A place to gather.
Keep people warm.
Keeping warm. Or keeping cool. Or safe from the smoke during the fires, for sure.
And a source of information.
And those are all very true of what libraries do. So people think of us in many cases as materials. So you can see, obviously, we check out books. That's what people think of first and foremost when they think of libraries. But we also have eBooks. We have things that are called Playaways. Victor up in the booth loves the Playaways. They are just little MP3 players you put in a battery and some headphones, headphones and you go. We have e-audio, we have music, DVDs, a variety of databases for people to do that research. You know, a lot of people are like, oh, I can't access Consumer Reports. You can access that for free through the library and we can show you how to do it. There's language databases, small engine repair, car repair, a whole variety of things that you can access, all paid for with your tax dollars, but considered free. We also check out other things. Ukuleles, which are super popular. Board games. So we have nearly 100 board game titles now and they are extremely popular. They're not your typical Life or Monopoly, we have exploding kittens.
I just played that.
Did you? And there's board games for young children, board games for families, board games for people of all ages. And so you can discover a lot of different things. We also found a point that we were having a lot of bike thefts from the library. So we started checking out bike locks. We check out headphones for people to use in the library. And I can look around, there's a lot of people with glasses on. A lot of people forget their reading glasses. And so we'll check out reading glasses to people for the day too. So we're always looking for ways to meet the community's needs, whether it's as small as just having some reading glasses available to checking out 50 books at a time. We work a lot with community partners. It is a big part of what we do. We are not the experts in everything. We can find the information that you want, but we rely on expertise to help us with a lot of different things. So this is just a list of some of the groups we work with on a regular basis. This isn't just one-time things. We work with Colorado Humanities. We put on a big History Live series of programs this past September with other libraries and museums in the area. The Durango Adult Education Center. We've got Independent Lens and Rocky Mountain PBS, the League of Women Voters. We work with the Herald on the Durango Diaries programs. Fort Lewis College. These are just a small number of the regular partnerships that we utilize to bring information to the community. We also have a lot of programs. Some of those partners contribute to those programs. Some of those are based on our expertise. As I say, it was one of the thrills of my lifetime to meet Carol Bernstein for our Literary Festival a couple of years ago. But we, last year we hosted Chris Bojalean. This year it will be Lisa C. If you're not familiar with Lisa C., she writes a lot about Asian-American history. I'm reading currently the book Shanghai Girls, which is about young women who immigrated to the United States during the Depression. But she's a great author, so I hope to see you at the Literary Festival. You can see we had our Touch a Truck event. These are just a few photos. Legos, teens, babies. We provide programs for people of all ages. We, this is just a listing of our staff. We do a lot of things at the library. And it's all just because we want to serve the public. So our youth services staff, they do programs for youth every week. They also do outreach to preschools and daycares and to the schools. We have a program that we are bringing materials to 10 different preschools and daycares every month. So we bring them a bag of materials and exchange that so that we can bring literacy to the kids who don't necessarily have the ability to get to the library. We have a collection management staff that is, they work on ordering, to processing, to getting the invoices, shipments, and making sure everything is ready to go onto the shelves, cataloging a variety of things. We have two full-time information services staff who manage all of our computers in the building and all of our systems that go into that. We have our adult services who do all of the program for adults and they have a lot of those partnerships I talked about. They do outreach to Four Corners Healthcare and Sunshine Gardens at least every other week. We try to go every week, but sometimes it's every other week. And just provide, they provide materials to those folks, but they are providing them with what we call advisory services, where they are talking to them, learning what they enjoy, and bringing those materials to them. So it's more than just a drop-off of materials. It is giving people interaction that they don't get on a regular basis. And so they really rely upon our staff to provide them with human interaction that might be beyond the walls of where they are. We have our facility staff who not only maintain the building, but they also take care of all of those community room rentals. So they set it up, take it down, make sure the technology is working. And of course, there's administration, me and our administrative assistant and our assistant director, but we manage the daily operations of the building, liaison to our library advisory board and the friends, and execute our strategic plan. Any questions about our staff? All right. You may be wondering what this is. So behind the scenes, when you're returning your library materials, it looks like an ATM either on the outside of the building, on the drive up, or when you're in the building. I wish I had a video to show you. But when you return those materials, it's read on an RFID tag and it travels along this track. So this is coming from the lobby. It travels here to this section right down here. It goes up. It's sorting all the materials for us. So it travels along the track and then it says, this book is an adult fiction book. It belongs in this bin. This book is a children's book. It belongs over here. If we didn't have this system, we would probably have to double our, double our materials handler staff at least. So it's not only an investment in saving the work that needs to be done by people that is just moving things around, it's also very ergonomic. And it's really cool. So if you have not had that tour of the library and seen that, I'd be happy to show you. It's a pretty cool system. We're also a patented trademark resource center, as you all know. We started that, we grand opened in May of 2018 and we've been so successful that our librarian was offered a fellowship, as you know. And so Donna Arment is still in Washington. She'll be back in August working on that fellowship. And they have nothing but great things to say about her. She's becoming an expert in trademarks. So she's really learning a lot about trademarks and they feel that she's very advanced in that area. So when she comes back, you'll have a trademark expert right at the public library. This is our website. You can find our events calendar on here. There's constantly things going on at the library, information about our community rooms, eBooks, our patented trademarks. You can check your library account. And then just going under these different dropdowns, how do I contact the library? How do I make a suggestion for purchase? So explore those resources when you go to our website. On the bottom of that page, you'll see library news and announcements. So we will put up the different programs or things that we have going on and try to give updates. Our catalog will get a whole new look. We are in the process right now of, with our new library, integrated library system. As you may have seen, our system went down in December. It was the thing we all feared. We're able to get that back up, but we are really looking forward to migrating to our new system, which is cloud-based. We're very excited about that. But this whole page will look very different once that new system is up. We are doing the background work on that right now. A lot of staff training. And then there's going to be a migration of data, which is going to take a lot of work. So we're very excited to get that going. Like us on Facebook. We post a lot of really fun things on Facebook and share a lot of information as well, not only about the library, but about the city. So like us on Facebook. Our stats are through November. We haven't finished our December statistics yet. But you can see that we have over 388,000 what we call collection uses. That's how the state counts it. So it's physical materials, e-materials, and our database use. So that's pretty amazing. Our youth circulation was up just over 5% in 2018, which is a fairly big jump. They jumped a lot comparing 17 to 18 with a lot of work that that team has done in the collection. And our eBook and e-audio circulation is up almost 40% over the previous year. Over 25,000 people have active library cards. We consider an active library card as somebody who's used it in the last three years. We've had almost, at that point, about 370,000 people have walked through our doors. Over 1,150 groups have rented our program rooms. We had 497 programs with over 18,000 people attending those programs. And our team program attendance has risen almost 74%. And that's really due to the dedication of our youth services staff. And just over 115,000 people used our computers and wireless. And that's about 62,000 wireless sessions. This, now, this included our branch libraries, which are now their own library district, as you know. So some of those numbers will probably go down next year because, but they weren't a hugely significant number that we had. Any questions? Any questions?
It's impressive.
Our team works really hard. They work hard from the moment they walk in the doors until the moment they leave. I encourage them not to work from home because I think their well-being is very important, but you can't take your mind off your work sometimes. People are always coming up with ideas and ways of doing things and doing it in an efficient and cost-effective manner. And I think that that's really important to know that the library staff are going to be proud of that team. They work really hard day in and day out.
Wonderful.
Thanks for reminding us of the incredible array of resources that the library offers the community. It's pretty impressive.
Well, you know, and a lot of people have asked us about the homeless population or the unhoused population and what kind of services we provide to them. And just to, just so you know, anybody can get a library card with a photo ID. And so a lot of our population comes and uses the library. They're able to check out materials, they can use the computers, and a lot of our population just comes in. They just want to be normal, so they just want to go online. And they might play a game or go on Facebook and then they'll read a book or check out a magazine and just live a life of normalcy within our walls. And I think that's something really great that we do, but they also look for information and that's what libraries do. We will provide you with the information you need and send you in the right direction for the resources that you might be seeking. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, you guys. Have a wonderful evening and happy new year.
Appreciate the update. Thanks for joining us tonight. All right. With that, I will move on to the review of the consent agenda. This part of the agenda is set aside to allow council by a single motion to approve items that are normally considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member requests that an item be removed from the agenda. We did have one item removed from our consent agenda. Amber, did you want to discuss that?
Yes. So we pulled, excuse me, thank you, Mary, you said. We pulled item which was previously 6.4, discussion and possible action regarding the adoption of the Parks Open Space and Trails Recreation Master Plan. We pulled this for two reasons. One, we had a technical error with loading our agenda documents. And then we had a request from council for some further discussion prior to putting this on the agenda. So I believe there will be some further discussion this evening on that item as to whether or not you would like to bring that forward.
When...
Does that need to be posted?
What was that?
Was it?
The, the agenda was reposted without it on there?
Right, but so my question is, since it's not now on the agenda, can we be discussing it since it wasn't posted? The newest one doesn't list it as an item to be discussed.
I mean, you could discuss it, I believe you can discuss it now or you can wait until the end of the meeting and discuss it under new business. One or, one or the other, unless Dirk likes, Dirk feels otherwise.
Comments?
Effectively, we need business because it's something you don't talk about.
Perhaps in the, you know, down the road, so I think it's fine to bring it up either place.
Under upcoming meetings or something?
Something like that.
I didn't see new business on there. I just thought...
Let's talk about under future new business this evening.
Perfect.
That's great. Let's keep it where it's supposed to be. That's, it sounds good. So with that, Ms. Phillips, can we, will you read our consent agenda items, please?
Certainly. Item 6.1 through 6.3 are approval of minutes. 6.1, the regular meeting of December 3rd, 2019. 6.2, the study session of December 10th, 2019. 6.3, the regular meeting of December 17th, 2019. 6.4 and 6.5 are discussion and possible action items. 6.4 concerns resolution R 2020-1, changing the dates of future city council meeting. 6.5 concerns requirements for the city to comply with the Sunshine Act. And item 6.6 is final approval of ordinance O 2019-27, granting an easement to Roger and Patricia Singer to install underground electric, communications, and gas services at 1074 East Fifth Avenue and declaring an effective date.
Do we have a council who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda this evening? Okay.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Ms. Phillips, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Brookie?
Yes.
Counselor Bateen?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mary Yussa?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Phillips. And if I can, I'd like to suggest requests that we amend our agenda to bring items 14 council reports and actions and 15 future potential agenda items above number 13, or if you will, if we move 13 to the end since it has a executive session. That way we won't hold, keep people, keep, keep waiting. So do we have, Dirk, can I just ask for a council motion to make an amendment to the agenda?
Yes.
Motion to the agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Council discussion? Ms. Phillips, may we have a roll call?
Mayor Pro Tim Brookie?
Yes.
Counselor Bateen?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Yes.
And Mary Yussa?
Yes.
Okay, then we will move on to council reports and actions. Counselors, do we have any, one that would like to share something at this time? We did have a long holiday, but if we have any updates on council meetings?
Sure. I went to, two meetings this past week. I went to the Alliance, the Economic Alliance for Economic Development, and we're still working on that press release, but we'll be announcing our new executive director coming on board. We're also got some updates on the La Posta effort, along with the city, the county, and private sector in that area. Nothing formal to report, but meetings are taking place. I think there's some things work that we can be doing and I'd like to later tie that into the city and the commissioners' meeting that we might discuss. So that was good. Also met, because Counselor Baxter had to be away, she asked for someone from the council to attend, so I attended the infrastructure advisory board meeting. That was very informational. One of the things we ended up talking about was some of the meetings that Counselor Baxter and I had had with all of the advisory boards on coming together with a draft for the council to look at. And one of the comments that came out of this meeting was the real importance of having, you know, hearing from the council, what are the three big issues you want us to take care of in there or to think about, focus on in this coming year? And I explained that with the January 14th meeting, that we'll be prioritizing those and then we'll have more clarity and we'll also the process for bringing back some suggestions that we've been hearing through the advisory board process. So those are two big meetings that just took place yesterday.
Starting off the year, full steam ahead. Anybody else? No? Dean?
None. It's been a good weekend, or vacation, actually.
Right. I, under reports and actions, am just going to announce that I have office hours next Monday, January 13th, from 12 to 1:00 p.m. here at City Hall. And I've intentionally scheduled in front of them for this Monday because on the 14th, we have a study session from 4 to 6:00 p.m. where we will be talking about the prioritization of city council priorities for 2020. And so I wanted to set aside some time if anyone wants to join my office hours, I would be happy to listen. This is going to be an important opportunity to talk about how we focus our time primarily for our study sessions. I'm also speaking with the La Pod Forum members next week and I did speak with YPOD's last month. And I just, I think people are just recognizing that last year was a big year. We had a lot of change. As a council, we accomplished a lot and I think already we're starting to look ahead. And I know we have a lot planned and anticipated for this coming year. So I think people are wanting updates on what we're doing and next week again will be a big week for us to kind of prioritize our time and attention since we do have limited time. So it'll, it'll be interesting to see where we go. And then, and that's all. So that's all for council reports and actions. Nothing else?
Mayor, do you mind reporting or making an announcement about tomorrow's meeting with the city? The search firm, that'll be a public meeting?
At 3:00, yes.
I just wanted the public to be aware of that.
And so, go ahead.
Tomorrow we'll be having a special meeting at 3:00 here to discuss as a council what it is we're looking for in the process for our search for a city manager, issues along that way. And I think issues to discuss what's the appropriate role of public engagement in that process. So 3:00 tomorrow, it will be a public forum.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, future potential agenda items.
I have a couple, by name. As we think about the city and the county commissioners' joint effort, I'd like us to possibly add the La Posta effort to that discussion. And then the possibility of exploring collaboration on light industrial spaces that we might not have considered previously. So I'd like to add that to a discussion item. For, with that, I'd like to add the Mason Center to a discussion center, a discussion item. I know that we're, that's in transition and I think it's in the city's best interest to think about what's the best and highest possible use for that. And I'd like a discussion of what we might consider. And then the last thing I'd like to ask is, I'd like to ask that as a council, we consider the possibility of a forensic audit, recognizing that we have the Colorado Bureau of Investigation Review and I don't want to in any way counter or impede that. But depending on the outcome of that, I think it might be in the city's best interest to have a plan in place that if things go a particular way, we might want to look at a larger, more comprehensive audit. And I think that would require a discussion by the council of what those actions might be. And I'd like to ask that we can have that put on an agenda in a discussion format sometime
So I have a question.
Yeah.
On those items, I would look for consensus and direction from council so that we can appropriately schedule those items. And I need to make sure that we have consensus to move forward with direction from council.
So the first one was?
City, city and the county commissioners looking at the discussion of both La Posta when we have our next meeting and also the possibilities of collaborating on other properties or other efforts on maybe a potential light industrial use.
So you're talking about working with the county on that?
With the county.
And you want to bring that up during the next meeting?
Yes, please.
I think that that would be an appropriate topic, time to bring that up in new business and requesting with them if we can have those discussions. Is that what you'd like to do, a joint discussion with the county?
I was hoping we could get it on the agenda for the next meeting.
The meeting that is currently scheduled for the 21st for the Athena?
So we are not scheduling that agenda. That's in the county's hands.
So if council directs, I can work with Chuck and see if there's time for that.
You know, it might be appropriate to also have a prior update from community development about exactly what's happening before, because there are things, as you mentioned, are happening. And I think it's important to know what's happening before we start asking the county at that level of electives to be making assertions and requests. We all need to be informed first about what's going on, I believe. Perhaps that's a study session, if that can be fit into a study session.
Well, I think staff can provide an update of current circumstances, what's going on, updated information to council so you have the information of the city's side and then you can move forward into the discussion with the Board of County Commissioners with ideas and we'll make sure that the county is amenable with adding that to the agenda.
Thank you, if there's consensus.
I think it would be helpful information to have. So maybe we can do an update in a meeting, inform at city council meeting from our community development, potentially.
We could have that here. We can provide it in written documents, however you'd like it.
The second item was a discussion around the Mason Center, please. And what might be some other, other uses, highest and best possible uses for, recognizing that this is a huge process and involve significant community engagement. But I think we have a responsibility to look at this site and to consider what else could be.
I think, again, there too, there, I'm sure that Parks and Rec Board has envisioned some course of action on that, on that property. It can be further informed by council requests. I'd first like to understand what they might be anticipating and on what schedule before we start making demands of staff to, to set up those public engagement programs. So if we could be, again, informed a little bit, that is a hot topic clearly and certainly something that the public's going to want to be a part of.
And I would like to know beyond Parks and Rec, what might be other uses of that space?
Right.
I mean, I recognize the, all of the legal, possible legal ramifications of that as well, but I, I feel that beyond what, using it for the designated purpose, you could consider using it for other issues that impact the city and help achieve our goals. So I guess I wanted to have a robust discussion of what else could be.
Used for that space?
Mm-hmm.
I wonder, I'm wondering if that might be a good item to add to our January 14th study session? I think that could be a larger discussion that could require a lot of vetting and kind of staff preparation, I would guess.
And I think that we'll see how the 14th, the results of the 14th study session for your priorities. And I mentioned earlier, Barbara and I met just as an update meeting that we have scheduled on that, that it would likely be an item that would come out in the priorities. So I think it's very appropriate and timely that it was brought up today because I just, you know, I have all of your priorities that were provided that we can use as a starting off point, but then you clearly will continue to have thoughts and generate ideas as we move into next week's study session.
I think that's great. I think it's a good point and I think I would love to have the discussion as well. I think it would be helpful. I do know we have limited time, but I'm also wondering, you know, we may want to even consider when we have our meeting on the 14th, increasing the list beyond 10, you know, because we, we will ultimately have more time.
Right.
And so we may be able to increase that list just to make sure we get the topics on the list that we think are important.
And I will also be including current projects that staff is working on.
Yeah.
Similar to how we worked on the priorities for prioritization process previously. We have 40, 50 items that we had that were lined out. I was hoping just to find the top 10 to see what kind of alignment we had with council for that starting off point.
Great.
And those agenda docs will be out on Friday.
Great.
And then the last item with the forensic audit.
Got it, yeah.
Yeah, and I recognize, my goal is that we don't, that we consider looking at what might need to happen, not necessarily going to any execution, but you could consider what you want in a forensic, we should as a council, because it would be a council obligation, I think, consider what we might want in that such an audit, what an RFP might look like, possibly considering the timing for submitting an RFP, depending on the outcome of the CBI. And then being, but being ready to at least make a decision to go forward or not and not losing necessarily time in between that process. So I, I think my view is that it's a preventative measure and a measure to actually do a deep analysis, should it be warranted, which it may not be. But I wanted to at least have that discussion around what we as a council need to think about.
I think with mayor, more of a discussion than we can maybe have tonight.
Right.
Because I think we all need to think about that a little bit. So that, to me, goes to a study session of some sort. I'd love to have more information on that process that's taking place now at that same time. If I could be timed to go.
Yeah, I also recognize it would be a study session probably or a special discussion.
I think we might hear a little bit more about it this evening on, an update on that. But also, I think it's, I think we will be, we need to be prepared, as you're saying. And I think we, I think what we'll hear is that we, we do have measures in place to begin that process and allow us to input when, be prepared for that eventuality.
I'm finished, thank you.
So apparently, I know I've gotten several requests and I think that other city council members have too for a study session from the group that's doing the performing arts and convention center proposals. I think that they've made some progress and they have some things that they'd like to communicate with us about. So that would be something that I would like to have us invite into the study session to present.
To reach that.
City council. I also... Sorry. That's okay. I had brought up last time about the conversation that we need to have as a council about where our appointee evaluations will live and that we need to set goals and objectives with and for the appointees. And so we need to set some time up to do that.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Well, as getting the human resources support and helping us to create those goals and objectives and also to create job descriptions so that we have a complete performance evaluation process in place.
And I have documentation and information on the smart goal setting from Human Resources that will be sent to tomorrow. I have a whole packet, I have some examples from... I have a whole packet, I have some examples from some other municipalities.
And what, do we need to set aside?
We need some time to discuss it, so.
Yep.
So you have that on your list?
For future study sessions.
Yes, okay, great. We also have our, the first Strategy and Long-Term Finance Committee meeting to, next week on the 15th, to discuss when they'll be meeting and things like that. And we still have not determined a liaison for that group. So I was wondering when we might do that before that meeting?
Okay, good, you're bringing up really good points. Can I go back to the first one?
Yeah.
The, for the goals and objectives setting for our appointees. So we'll be meeting on, doing the evaluations next Monday. And do we, can we try to carve out time to, you know, should this be in a study session? Amber, is what you're seeing from other municipalities, that they're doing that? I envision this as, we've talked about jointly working on these goals with our appointees, you know? And so we need to somehow carve out time to do that as part, important part of this process that we want to do at the beginning of the year.
Right, so I think there's a number of ways that councils will do it. And we need to figure out how this council would like to have the conversation regarding goals. So I was hoping that by providing you the information that we have through Human Resources and then the examples that are from other municipalities, it'll give you some ideas of what the framework could potentially look like.
Okay.
And then if council would like to move forward with a discussion of goals in a study session, we can sit down in a study session and go through setting SMART goals. Or dependent on how, whatever your evaluation looks like in the conversation that we have, there could be a potential of proposing goals and having some of the work done ahead of time and then having a joint conversation and agreeing upon and tweaking the goals and measurable objectives.
Well, I would say that after we get this information that we're giving tomorrow, we still would need to have a meeting to determine what process or what way we want to do it. So I think that's the request.
Right, that's, the request is to discuss where the evaluations live and what process you would like to have. It's not the setting of the meeting to set the goals.
Okay, excellent.
And I think we want all five councillors there at that meeting for the goals and objectives. I know councillor Becter, you're gone at one at the end, so we wouldn't want to, we would want to avoid that one, I would think, the 28th. So we'll just have, yeah.
So we'll look, and that will be another one that's on the list of priority item?
Yes, definitely, okay. That we hope to quickly as possible. All right, and then your second was the Strategy and Long-Term Finance Committee liaison?
Yes.
Okay.
The...
Well, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, when are we going to do that?
We should do that.
I was going to suggest that, you know, as much as it is a strategy, long-term strategy commission, the person that probably can focus the most with that group would be the mayor, at least initially. And I would propose that that person, beginning this, this year, become, be the mayor for the, for the duration of, at least for the next three months or so, until this thing gets off the ground. That way we can all input to the mayor and move, we've all got boards and commissions that we're currently serving. And the mayor's currently got plenty to do, but only on one, as I understand, as I recall, only on one.
Correct, yeah.
Commission. So it seems in terms of balancing our workloads and that kind of thing, that the mayor might be the appropriate person to take that charge.
And so you're a rotating mayor, the mayor would rotate in. And so then Mayor Proton would become the liaison when you're the mayor?
Correct.
And then you'd, we would just rotate each, each time?
So could I ask, as a, just a counterpoint?
Yeah.
Do we see merit in actually having a liaison that might serve longer than a year at a time? Because I see the issue there, particularly when it's strategy and long-term. Not that I'm looking at somebody for four years, but there might be merit in having someone serve two years so that, two years so that you at least have the continuity of that, rather than somebody serving for three months and then stepping out again immediately. So I would offer a counterpoint, not indicative of any particular individual.
Sure.
But the use of the position.
Here's, so the folks that are doing work, we expect to be doing work, are the folks on the, that we've appointed to that commission, not, not the liaison. Liaison is just the communication in between, between council and that group. So I don't know that that would be interruption of continuity if, any different than any of our other appointments. In terms, in a, I see merit in having turnover just to not have one mindset be attached to that group forever.
I, I see a merit in turnover as well. I'm just concerned about an annual turnover rather than enough time. Like, I remember when councillor Bettine said it took about two years just to get up to speed on really understanding. And I get that. So I, I think there's a balance between one, three months to one year versus four years in a role, or seven or eight years. So I do think, I do value the turnover. I'm just looking for something so very new, making certain that we're doing right by our volunteers by providing possible continuity. It's a different way of looking at it, I think. And it's not, it's based on the position, not the individuals. I want to make that clear, and the term that that person might serve.
Well, and I'm not certain that it should be reserved for the mayor. I just think it's a city council person. I see, I can, I can sort of understand how in the beginning the mayor might be the key position for that, maybe. But I don't know that there's any particular reason for that.
I think, I think currently, you know, and I'm open to whatever. I just think currently the situation is the mayor has one, one group that she's responsible for and it's open and available. And then somebody needs to lead that meeting in a week or two weeks.
Right.
So could you actually then see, just for continuity's sake, continuing on rather than a three-month?
Of course, yes.
I know that's my issue as well, is that...
I would be very happy to, if that's what the council decided.
Do you want to, do you want to?
I would love to, yes.
Oh.
Yeah, very much so too. I, like I said, I am really only on one. I'm on the Creative Economy Commission. And so I just feel like it would be a, and I'd like to, and I would love to be able to communicate back with what they are and communicate to them with what council would like me to convey as well.
So do you feel then, Melissa, that previously when we were kind of picking and choosing what groups we were going to be with, and you felt a little bit overwhelmed, which is one reason why you ended up with one group? So do you feel now like things are not quite so overwhelming?
Well, actually, it's not really the reason why I ended up with one group. I was on the Alliance and I loved being on that board. It was, it's a great group of people and I saw so much merit in it. But there was, I was, I think, it, I, I, we had another, you know, Barbara really wanted to serve on that board. And she really felt strongly about it. And there was some discussion that, at the time when we came on, that really that there should be more turnover than just sitting on boards for four years. That, you know, that there was a discussion that maybe two years is a better, better time to serve. And I had served for two years on that board. The previous councillor who was on that before Christina Rinderlei, she had served on that board for eight years. And so I, I felt like I was accommodating to others' desires to participate and be involved. It is a really great board to get, to get to know the community because you're involved with a lot of people. So I didn't, I didn't give it up because I was overwhelmed. It was more of a desire to, to, to share with councillors who were really seeking the opportunity themselves and to be fair. And so I was, I was the one that gave up a board.
And I think we all have two assignments, correct? I think I have two, I think councillor Bettine is the two and everyone else has two assignments. But I think it was also a distribution of work.
Who might have suggested that that be the situation until we reevaluate our positions? And usually in the spring at the, at the retreat, we, that's when we kind of...
That's when we usually do it.
You know, take assessment of what our new interests are and do some rotation. And it's not a formal process, but that's a sort of informal process about where we might go. And, you know, I, I've been on the airport commission for a couple of years. And like Chris said, it's a, that's a particular commission where there is longevity and purpose and a certain skill set that might be required to be on that. And so I requested to remain on for another term. But I think I've probably served my purpose on that board coming up. And so I think we need to take a look, an overall look, especially with the new boards and commissions evaluations, and not evaluations, but evaluating their purpose. I think that's really good, that we can reposition ourselves in all those positions. So if, if mayor's not the person to be heading this particular strategic, long-term strategic committee, then, then we can talk about it then. Yeah, I don't think we're locked into the dogma that having to be the mayor on a rotational basis. I think it just can reshuffle the deck and retreat if necessary. And probably sounds like it will be if you want to get on that board. You can decide whether, we can all decide who needs to go where and find if you add that to your list. That's what you want to do.
Other council thoughts? We also have to talk about staff liaison, which I believe we had designated as?
Finance director.
I mean, as director and as chairman manager?
No, just the finance director. But you know, in this one, and it is a different situation. It's a new, new board commission, or board, I guess is the term. And I do see that having filled in for others and attended, you might want, we might want to, with this one, talk to this board in January about the idea of an alternate as well, who's up to speed on the discussions. Who, you know, so you have a liaison and an alternate who would probably attend most sessions so that he or she is up to speed, can sit at the table as well and discuss things. Because I think you're going to need that kind of engagement.
I think that's a really good idea. We have a really, I think, we have alternates, alternates on our other advisory boards. And I'm not sure how we overlook that. I think it would be a good, a good thing to try to get to.
But this would be a designated alternate, almost like you have on the planning commission where half the time that person ends up voting.
Right.
So I think that would be at a minimum.
So to follow up on that conversation, would, how would that person be appointed? Would we go back to a selection process?
I think we'd see who wants to add it to his or her schedule. I'm not offering, I'm not volunteering, mind you.
Oh, no.
Another councillor?
Oh, another councillor liaison?
You know, the councillor.
I was thinking alternate Strategy and Long-Term Finance Committee member.
Oh, you might need that as well. But I was actually, in this case, because it's new and because of it, I was thinking that we might want to think about an alternate liaison so that we have, because you could still have two people at the meetings and not having to post it. And so that you could still be, in case something comes up, somebody else isn't, is totally up to speed.
Here's, my thoughts on that are, it's meant to be a liaison, not to be a, and that, that council functions independently. So to have two council members at a meeting with five, which is supposed to be an independent commission of five people, I think is overwhelming. And that, that thwarts the purpose of the independent commission to have long-term strategy and finance thoughts.
Well, so this is one of the topics that'll be in the discussion about the advisory board.
Right.
So I don't know if having it now is...
Yeah.
It is one of those items that will...
Yeah, I think it's probably appropriate for later. But it also, I'm, I'm not aware of any other board where there is an alternative liaison.
But that's why I brought it up, it would be unique for this board because of it being...
I think the other way of handling that is if it was a situation where the liaison couldn't attend a meeting, that they made it very clear, like Kim just did, and you attended. So that we always had a councillor there. So that we've always made sure that a councillor was in attendance for the infrastructure committee meeting that you attended. But anyway, I think that maybe that's a discussion to have, like you're suggesting with the entire advisory boards. But, so two issues, the council liaison to confirm that. And do we need a motion for that? Do we need?
I think you guys should do it by consensus. It's not on the agenda for action. So if you want to wait and do that. I mean, you might say that you'll attend this meeting and if you want a formal vote on it, I would suggest you set that for action at a future meeting, because it's not agendas tonight for that.
But we haven't formal, we haven't done formal action.
No, I don't think you actually done formal.
So I don't see why we'd have to do formal action on this.
Okay. And then, then can I go back to the staff or to the staff liaison? Finance director, can we have a discussion about inclusion of the city manager? Interim city manager, and why or why not?
So I just wanted to point out, I had read the establishing document prior to this meeting and I just had Amy pull it up to make sure that I wasn't recalling incorrectly.
Yeah.
And it does say, it doesn't call out staff, but it says working closely with the finance director and city manager. It says both of them in the establishing document. So I just wanted to make sure that council was aware that that was in the resolution.
Yeah, I don't think that was intended that way.
It's like either or, whoever's the appropriate one. It wasn't two necessarily.
And that's perfectly fine, I just want, I figured this was going to come up. So I wanted to read the document and that's what the document says.
Yeah, I don't think that was...
I mean, there is two purposes to this commission. One is strategy and the other is finance. So I don't know why it would be limiting to just the finance director for big picture items that are going to affect the city of Durango for 20 years or not singularly financial issues.
Well, for the same reason why you wouldn't have two city councillors sitting there either. So what we're talking about is an independent group that's going to try to plan for the future. And when they need to consult with the city manager or with any other staff, they would ask them to come in and work with them.
Correct.
So it doesn't need to be that the city manager is there every time.
So into the basic fundamental housekeeping of book out minutes, that's going to be done by the...
I've asked the clerk's office to take care of that.
So does the, the resolution, whether it says either or?
It says and.
And, city manager and...
It just says work closely with.
But it doesn't say who the staff liaison will be.
Right.
So it could go, if council's not comfortable with two staff members being there, then we could have, depending on what items are on the agenda, the appropriate finance director or city manager would be the staff in attendance in addition to whomever is recording and taking notes for them.
Well, may I just suggest, for the interim, since we do not have a finance director, that our interim city manager join this next meeting and, and that we can continue those discussions.
We do have an interim finance director.
Are we going to get an update on that?
We have an acting finance director and we will get an update on the interim finance director when I give my report.
Okay.
Yeah, it seems like the global issues are more best handled by the city manager, interim city manager than the, and the resource, selected resources on an as-needed basis would be the finance director. And the city manager would give the bigger picture.
Maybe the Strategy and Long-Term Finance Committee could determine what they would like to do.
I'm sure they will, yeah.
Maybe that's how we should, let them figure it out.
But it is, we, we, we need a staff person to create the agendas and all that kind of thing. So who's, who's the best person prepared to do that? I, you know, I think that's what we're looking for here.
As you suggested, we start with city manager and then figure that out.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good. All right, and, okay, so is it, so, would please council, okay, if I attend this meeting next Wednesday then, is it Wednesday?
Yes.
All right. Okay.
So one other thing I had on my list was that we're doing our priorities on the 14th.
Correct.
And I would also like to have a discussion about the process and procedure. I think that there's some of the, I don't want to have it now, but I think that there's some of the processes that we're doing around our priorities and our budgeting and our goals and objective setting that are a little bit backwards, that they actually don't flow one into the other. So that's something I would like to have during that discussion.
To add to our process list. Okay.
And I think that's all.
Leaving me hanging, I'm pensive now.
About what?
What, what, what process or what, an example?
We'll talk about it on the 14th.
Okay, good, good. No, that'll be exciting.
Suspense.
Yeah, yeah.
There you go, gotta have something.
Well, there was an issue... Well, there was an issue about the post-plan. And, and scheduling that for a review. And I was, I was the guy that was gone, I guess, so I was at the good fortune of being in Spain when there was a tie vote, and therefore was, was...
I'd like to say that wasn't a tie vote.
It was two to two.
In which case, the vote is not adopted, the plan is not adopted, so there's actually a procedure for, if someone's missing, it's not necessarily a tie. We've had other votes where it went in the favor, we voted in favor of something with two votes. So I think it's important to recognize that an absence, there was a, there was a decision on that.
I agree with all that. And then I heard and I read the minutes that it went the way it did because of special concerns that were voiced, and my assumption is that those concerns were in fact addressed by the advisory boards.
No, they were not.
Due to advisory boards. Well, they've got a document for us to read and to consider, and they bring it back to us, and I'd like to see it, and I'd like to at least agendize it for next week, next council meeting, to bring it up and, and see what revisions, substantial revisions have been made, and consider voting on that new post-plan.
And I'd like to counter with a different perspective, which is that the vote was taken. There is a process for resending, or, you know, reconsidering the vote and the timeframe, and unless the document has had significant substantive changes to it, I'd like to say that I'm not convinced it's respectful of council's time, and I would be more interested in seeing the significant changes in advance, and then the council can decide whether or not it's worth another discussion. But from what I've seen so far, I haven't seen the significant changes that would reflect the things that both Councilor Baxter and I, and I think we're the only two who provided written information as to what we would want to see in a plan. But I would just argue that it's a slippery slope to be going down, that if you don't like the outcome of a vote, we then bring it back again, and I just, I want to make certain that significant changes have indeed take place before we spend our valuable time reviewing something again in a public format.
My understanding is, is there have been changes made, that both groups, both the Natural Lands Board and the Parks and Recreation Commission Board have brought back substantial changes. The document is changed, it's a new deal, and I would like to consider a motion to amend the previous action, to be able to bring it back and reconsider the hard work that, and be respectful of the advisory board's response to your questions.
So what's the procedure here?
And I will ask for that in just a moment. As the counselor, I appreciate Parks and Recreation Open Space Program and what it does for the community, and I mean, we just can't leave this alone and just say, in fact, they've gone through their process, bringing it back to us and then making that request that we are, it's falling on deaf ears, I think would be disrespectful to those boards and the people that serve them.
And I mean, no due respect to the boards, but I also want to respect the process that we have in place here, and I think that this is a potential slippery slope, because what's substantial to you may not be substantial to me or to every member of that advisory board, so I...
It would be very helpful for me, Chris, were you at the meeting as the liaison?
At that Parks and Recreation Board when they approved the modified version of the plan.
Can you add anything to this conversation, since I was not there?
Well, only that I also would like to see it back in front of the council, but I'd also like to hear the answer to the question that I think you were about to ask.
Yes, what's our process here?
Well, I think the process would be what we're really talking about, because I don't think we have the documents here, and one of the reasons it was removed from the agenda is because the documentation inadvertently didn't get loaded, is that instead of getting into that discussion tonight, you know, I think that procedurally, what we've been doing is we have a request to add something to the agenda, so I think we can address that question. It doesn't mean you have to act on it. I think what I understand is that Council rookie is just asking that it be put on the agenda, and that it be brought back, so...
I thought I heard a vote, not a discussion.
Well, I think that it would be agendized for potential action.
It would be voted on on the potential agenda, and you meant, you said next week, but you mean the next council meeting?
Next week's out.
Right.
Yeah, and then there are processes in Robert's Rules to, you know, to bring something back, to take a look at it, either because of changed circumstances or because council wants to take, you know, take a look at it. There are three or four ways to do that, so rather than getting into all those details, it may be possible that I could give a brief overview of what I see are the Robert's Rules implications, rather than going through them all tonight, but I think that the implication of putting it back on the agenda is simply, at that point, then the chair, the mayor, could make a determination of whether or not a motion was appropriate at that time. I don't know that we can make that decision now. I think what we're talking about doing is agendizing it.
And so do you need a vote to agendize that?
Well, we've been just doing it by...
One counselor can suggest it, and spike consensus.
Well, we've sort of looked for a consensus to put it back.
So I would like to see it back on the agenda, just for the record, and see what the changes are, have it be considered by council. Certainly, the Parks and Recreation Board had the intention when they voted on it, so they would like us to see that again. They voted for it to pass.
And I would like to see the full revised document highlighted with how the substantial changes have been made in advance, so we can look at it before it's in a discussion. So I think the council deserves to see it well in advance, rather than just a weekend beforehand, so that it can be reviewed. I'd like to, while I've received written answers to the things I would like to see in a master plan, I don't think the answers to me are sufficient. I can't speak to what Councilor Baxter received, but I don't think they sufficiently address what I had put forward as what I want to see. And so before we have, take time, I think we need to see this document and have an opportunity to hear this is what still seems to be missing.
Well, I'd just like to respectfully disagree that this be treated any differently than any other agenda. I don't know if it makes the agenda, then it should go out on the same timing. That's the public process that we have in place, and that's what the public has come to understand, is the process, as well as the council, as well as the staff. And so I don't know that it should be treated any differently. Certainly, we can ask as many questions as we like about it, and I would expect we'd have a full presentation by the Parks and Recreation Department and staff, and they would answer every question that we can drum up at the time.
And I guess I wanted to make sure I understood the implications of, you know, the further implications of this issue is, I mean, I saw some communication from the Parks and Recreation, I believe, of if this wasn't brought forward and passed, and I want to make sure as a council we understand that, of what happens if this post-plan is not brought back forward and put on the agenda and reviewed again and potentially passed. Can we bring that forward for the record, so that we all understand the implications of what we're discussing?
Yeah, your question, I responded just directly to you.
Okay.
But I'm happy to bring that up right here, and I can let you know, or if Kathy wants to come forward, Kathy, please feel free to come forward with us.
Just because I think sometimes in, in, it's important to really understand the implications of voting or not voting on community issues.
And I'd also like to hear when those implications were previously discussed, because it was the first time I've heard about them. Having checked previous minutes, I haven't heard that there's an imminent decision that needs to be made.
Good evening, Mayor. You said then, members of city council, the mayor requested information about what are the implications if we don't come back and revisit the adoption of the Parks Open Space Trails and Recreation Master Plan. So I responded to Amber, and then she forwarded on to the mayor in terms of why we would want to proceed with looking at the document. We started the process back in 2017, and so the last two and a half years with the community has been spent on the update of the master plan previously adopted in 2010, and so it's been a two and a half year process with the expectation that we would most likely adopt a plan at the end of that effort. So I think that there is a public expectation that participated in the process, as well as support of our advisory boards, Parks and Recreation, Natural Lands, as well as the Planning Commission. There were amendments after we had the split vote and the failed adoption of the master plan. Those amendments were reviewed by both boards in a separate motion and recommendation to the city council that was sent to you all in your weekly status report. So we did bring up to date with regard to the changes that were made to that. The master plan, as you know, is an element of the City of Durango Comprehensive Plan, and so the Comprehensive Plan date is 2017, and the intent of this master plan is to be updated every five to 10 years. And so what we have is a master plan from 2010. We've accomplished many of the goals from that 2010 plan, and so this new master plan is providing a roadmap for the future, the next five to 10 years. And so it's best practices in the nation, as well as in our own comprehensive plan for us to have a current master plan, so we can, can move forward with that. Do you want me to continue?
Yes, please.
Okay. And so I think that what we're trying to do is just share with you the timing and the importance of that. We did mention during the public hearing that we were nationally accredited as the Parks and Recreation Department in 2015. We are due for re-accreditation, meaning the accreditation team from out of state comes to Durango and goes through all of our documents and looks to make sure that we do meet those best practices of national standards. And the master plan is very much tied to that process. So the timing is important to us, because many of the documents for meeting the standards for accreditation are tied to our master plan. And so that is, that is in the timing in the sense of why we're wanting to bring it back to you in a reasonable and timely manner. So the other thing that we did is provide those written responses to both Councilor Baxter and Knowsworthy that I verbally gave during the public hearing on the first of October, but it sounded like you needed that information in writing, and we've also provided that to all of the city council, to make sure that you know that we've listened and we've responded to those needs to do that. The master plan is really utilized a lot when we apply for grants, and as well as the accreditation, to show that the department is capable of managing those grant funds and managing the capital projects. We speak about that in every grant application. And so the master plan is absolutely critical for our ability to seek outside funding, and as you know, we oftentimes are successful in the funding, and that's because we have a guiding document and support of the community for proceeding with funding for projects. So that's an important thing that, you know, I would share with you in terms of why we should have a master plan.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
So the accreditation is every five years?
We provide a report to the Accreditation Commission every year, but it's a visit to Durango every five years. That's the process. And so they originally came in 2015 to accreditate the department the first time, and then every five years they come back and do a re-accreditation.
And so at 2015, our master plan would have already been five years out of date?
Our current, our master plan that was used for the accreditation in 2015 was a 2010 master plan. And so we have, because we've gone through an extensive...
And what did we use in 2010? We would have used a 2005 master plan?
Prior to 2010, we had a 2001 master plan. That was the first master plan the Parks and Recreation Department had, was in 2001.
Thank you.
Very helpful, thank you. When did you say they were coming again for this process?
So the accreditation paperwork needs to be submitted by March 9th, and that's all of the documentation that we would submit for the visit, because they need time to review that before they come, and then their visit is in May, before Memorial Day.
Okay, thank you. Well, I appreciate the update. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Okay, so I think that I'm supportive of having it on the agenda as well, especially based on that review by Ms. Metz, so that would, it would just be, it looks like it would be an agenda item to, for January 21st.
And how much was missing from what wasn't able to be uploaded?
The full agenda document was not included in the posting on the website, in OnBase.
So that was the full master plan with all revisions to it highlighted?
Can you explain exactly what wasn't showing in the OnBase?
So what was in the agenda documentation is a staff report, a write-up of everything that you were receiving in the packet, to clarify what all that information meant and the process that we had undertook since the October 1, 2, 2 vote. So the staff report, the agenda documentation, and then there is a highlighted version of chapter eight, which is the financial analysis, that shows all the changes that were made from the 2019 version that you looked at on October 1st, and then the whole master plan was also included in the agenda documentation, so you can see the entire document again.
So it was just the staff report on the front that explains what the highlights are that were included, and all of the information, that's that whole review, that cover sheet, and then the attachment was showing up?
And then the answers to Councilor Baxter and my questions were provided on Monday, but not to the public?
No, those were just provided to the city council in an email that I sent to you all directly and copied the city manager. So you received that via email. That was not attached to the agenda documentation, that was given to you directly.
So in the agenda packet, I'm going to venture that you would like to see the full, updated, changed plan with highlights, as well as the staff report, and would you like to include the responses in writing to both your comments, and Councilor Baxter and Councilor Knowsworthy's comments, and if though, if you would like that to be expanded on, we can look into that. I just want to make sure that we're providing information that you would like to see in the document.
For the public record, I'm happy to share that with the public. I don't believe the answers were sufficient, and so we can discuss that at a future meeting, but the answers to me were not as substantive as I would have hoped, and so we can bring that up.
Yeah, and I was not here yesterday, so I did not see that till today, and I didn't have a chance to look at it as closely as I would like, but I also felt that the questions weren't actually answered.
Can we add that to the...
Can we add that to the agenda doc?
So when you say highlighted, are you, yellow highlights of every change that was made, or what I understand exists right at this moment is a summary of revisions in...
So it's actually the chapter eight, the, all the highlighted changes are shown to illustrate the additions to the master plan, so that was taken out of the whole document and just given to you as a specific introduction to the rest of the master plan. So it's very clear where the changes occurred in the document.
Good, good.
Excellent. All right. Further discussion on that topic? Okay. Anything else by counselors? I think I had, there was two additional thoughts that I, things I wanted to bring up. Process for advisory board interviews, do we want to talk about that? The, we have, how many interviews scheduled for February 5th and 6th?
Thirty-three applications.
Right, actually, you have thirty-five.
Okay, and I guess I just want to suggest to council that I think it's becoming, that we might need to revisit this process, instead of just scheduling thirty-five interviews, which equates to how many hours?
It's 5.83 hours, and then it will, you'll have a few breaks in there.
And also, if people can't make it, we're going to have to reschedule that, six hours of interviewing if all goes well, and possibly, most likely, a second day because people won't be able to make it, or a third day.
Third day.
And I want to just throw out there that I think that we might be at this point, with so much interest in our advisory boards, which is wonderful, that we may want to consider streamlining this process. I want to see if there's council support for that. Yes, what?
I'd like to hear how you propose to streamline it, rather than just, do you want to streamline it?
I have a suggestion, if that was appropriate. You know, I, without talking specific numbers, if we could look at the vacancies, upcoming vacancies on each of the boards and, and the field of applicants for each of those boards, and say, okay, let's, let's interview, let's make a shortlist down to a number that equates to one per vacancy plus one, you know, so we've got, if it's three vacancies, we interview four people, including the incumbents.
So would we, would we meet first to look at the entire list as a council?
We'd just, everybody'd join their shortlist.
Or we just do it?
Send that to staff?
Send it to staff.
You're making the assumption that automatically that all incumbents should get an interview, and I'm not certain that that's, would be a best practice either. Not that, again, not that I have something in favor or against an incumbent, but there is merit, as you said earlier, in turnover and fresh, different thinking, so I think an automatic, that if you're an incumbent, you get a slate, I, I think it needs to be looked at with no preconceived ideas of who should be considered.
Well, I think if you're, if you're winnowing the group down, then I think that all the applicants, whether they be an incumbent or not, would be in the winnowing process. all the applicants, whether they be an incumbent or not, would be in the winnowing process.
Yeah.
Perfect, okay. Yeah. No, no question.
But I'm not sure what the winnowing process looks like.
Yes, I'm not either.
I mean, what happens if you have six really good qualified candidates for two positions? And then you would say you only want, you want to winnow it down to three? I'm not, I don't know.
Well, I'm not sure either, and that's why I wanted to have the discussion. I'm not totally sure what the best process is, but I do realize that six hours of interviews, probably more, it'll be a third day, is just getting to be over burdensome.
Would it be possible for the staff to make a suggested procedure on how to handle that, that we might be able to look at, instead of trying to come to... I would like to just agree, having gone through this now for the multiple years, that the process is a little flawed, and we don't actually take a lot of time with these folks anyways, and it's just, it's a big time commitment. So, I think the idea of winnowing this down is actually a very good one, but would it be possible for staff to give us kind of a outline of how we might proceed, and we can feedback on it?
If there's council consensus on that, we're more than happy to.
And I'd like to suggest that we, as a council, I don't know when Counselor Baxter can help put together the draft that we've come back with, but I recognize the process is long, and, and I also want to give due time to the people who make the effort to fill out their application. I just don't want to rule someone out. I want, I don't want someone else ruling them out that hasn't been a council decision. So I want to make certain that it's council-driven.
No, I'm not saying, that's not what I'm suggesting.
No, I understand that.
I'm just suggesting that we do not try to create a procedure on the dais tonight with this suggestion, that we either agree that it needs to be winnowed down, and ask the staff to potentially suggest a way of doing that. There might be some research on the best practice in other communities, and that we can then review that as an agenda item, whether or not we go forward that way.
And if I heard Counselor Noesworthy, but, you know, we aren't leaving the staff to make decisions about applicants.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
But, but, and I understand, Counselor Bateen, what you're saying. I guess my question is, maybe now isn't the time, but I also think it might be a council responsibility, rather than putting it back on, on staff. So, you know, I think we might need a way to come up with what we want to do.
Council responsibility to do what? Come up with the process?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I think that what we're asking is that they could research and review best practices in other communities. The other option is just to go with something simple, like what Counselor Brokey is suggesting, and I might have one amendment to it. He's saying, you take the number of vacancies on each board and you add one. So, let's just say there's three vacancies on a board, you'd add one. So, it would be four. We would each send our top four applicants in to be considered, and we would see if there is consensus around that for interviews. I would suggest maybe do taking, adding two more. So I would take the top, the number of seats plus two. And if it was one, and just, just to give us more flexibility, also room for agreement. It could even be the number of seats plus three. It's just figuring that out, but it's whittling it down in some way, because we're over, it's, it's a lot. And so, and, and also, it changes. And so, what I've also seen through this process is, it's not just done at this time. Then there's another meeting, you have a vacancy, and all of a sudden, you're meeting again to fill another vacancy literally one month later. So it's a continual process. It doesn't just end here, but this just helps us get to that point. It could be very easy to suggest number of vacancies plus two, send that in to have staff, see if there's agreement.
So, just to give you some stats on what you currently have, there are twenty-seven vacancies. So you have twenty-seven seats to fill on your boards. There are twenty-four term limited, like termed out, so they're at the end of their term, and then you have three resignations. So no matter what, if you're going to interview the incumbents, then you will be having a minimum, like you'll be having twenty, you have twenty-seven open seats, so you're going to have at least twenty-seven interviews, unless you had a process where you were comfortable with the applications, and you're comfortable as the liaison of the board to say, this person that is applying as an incumbent is, you know, doing a fantastic job, their background knowledge is really important, it's critical to moving forward, this is, you know, let's say they're on a, they took over someone's term, they've only been there for a year, and you want to extend that term for a full term. So, there's information that staff could put together and provide you with a book. So we, we're more than happy to go off of the recommendation that Counselor Bateen had, can staff propose something and give you an idea of what you're currently working with. And then, perhaps looking at having twenty-seven vacancies come up at one time, looking at, okay, do we change when the terms come up? So once a quarter, you're having interviews, so that you only have seven at a time throughout the year. And then, that would, I mean, there's a lot of process change here. We don't have to go over it now, but if council does, asks me to go through and make some recommendations and give you some more information, I'm happy to, to provide that to you.
I would love to hear.
Yeah, that's, that's interesting, though, that we did, we have that many vacancies, that kind of makes this whole conversation moot, quite honestly, so.
Yeah, it does.
It does.
It does. And I, for one, I mean, this was, this was one of the things that I understood, was that this was part of our job, was interviewing people who applied for positions on the advisor board. And I'm very excited that we have as many people applying as we do.
So, if you have thirty-five applicants and twenty-seven vacancies, and there's at least one per board...
Then that's thirty-five anyway.
Yes.
There we go. I think we reached a consensus.
That sounds like it.
But we can look, we can look at those terms and timelines, and we'll get, get a recommendation, and then...
Great.
Do it that way, please.
Thank you. Okay. And then, I had an easy one, I hope. I would like to see if there's council support to remove the second public participation agenda item that we currently have on our agenda meetings. Do we have council support for that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, going forward, let's just only have public participation at item number four.
And I'd just like to say how much I've heard that people appreciate having that moved up to the beginning. I think, you know, we often see more people here, but I heard great feedback, so thank you.
Good. Okay, and I think with that, we can move on to item, agenda item number thirteen, unless there's anything else from council. Okay?
Okay.
City status update.
So I will try to make this as brief as possible, so we can get into the executive section. But first, I wanted to say Happy New Year. Very excited to head into 2020 for a productive and successful new year. So, I wanted to provide an update to the council on where we are with the budget. And we are currently working with DOLA. We reached out to the Department of Local Affairs for some technical assistance. Their budget office has offered to review the 2020 budget. They will be looking at the CAPER and the 2018 actual numbers that are in the 2020 budget, comparing those, and making sure that they are all in alignment. They'll be looking at the nineteen numbers and the twenty numbers. They'll also be looking at the fund balances, the general fund, enterprise fund, special revenue funds, and CIP, and looking at best practice, how we have the current budget has been developed over the years, and then recommending best practice changes. They're also going to be providing us with their review of four thousand budgets. So that, we've requested that they provide us with their top, what are your gold standards, best practice, here's what all budgets should look like if possible. So they will be providing us with that technical assistance. And once we finish that review, we will be coming forward, like I mentioned in the last meeting of 2019, with a one-fell swoop. We'll come back for any budget resolution amendments, any appropriations ordinance changes that are requested, and then the final budget document.
And when will that be again?
So, we are hoping to have that within the next four weeks. It may be six weeks, depending on how the process goes with DOLA. So that's what we're looking at. And if it happens before that, then that's fantastic, but we wanted to make sure that DOLA had enough time to provide the assistance, and that we could...
So, so six weeks, are you looking at the last city council meeting in February?
That would be the, that would be the farthest out that it would be. They have given us a date prior to that, but I want to make sure that I'm not giving, overpromising and underdelivering. And then, again, we're, we want accuracy and transparency in this process, so we're going to take our time with that. The December financials are being prepared. We move from a cash basis to an accrual basis, and we will be, I'll be able to present the 2019 December end of year financials to council at the February 4th meeting. And we will also have a CIP report for the fourth quarter at that point in time as well. We are proposing a new format. I'm calling it a slide deck. So each project will have a red, yellow, green, the stoplight, here's how the project is moving forward. It will include annual appropriations, so you can see what has been appropriated for a project over the years, what has currently been spent. It will have a status update and a project description, as well as a photo. So that will be coming forward. I will have a template for all of you to review. I would appreciate any feedback. We want to make sure that we have all the information that is important and provides transparent, clear, clean information to the public, so we can have this on our website. And then we'll be presenting those yellow and red projects as necessary at the meetings during my report. So we are moving forward with that. I also wanted to provide a brief update and make sure that the community and council knows that I have had a conversation with our CPI investigator, and the investigation is moving forward, so there is progress on that. We do not have an end date for that now, but we haven't spoken about it or had an update in the recent past, so I wanted to make sure that I just was able to let you know that it is moving forward, and we will continue to wait and see, wait for results. We're looking forward to council's priority study session next week. We will, like I mentioned before, we'll be including your top ten, show where the alignment lies within council, include work projects that are currently underway with staff, as well as other items like Counselor Baxter mentioned, with the processes, priorities, policies that would be important for council to set. So having all of those items lined out, and we can go through facilitation to come into alignment for 2020 priorities, specifically for the first few months. And then, we are posting a community satisfaction survey. So we did a community satisfaction survey in 2018, and it is time for us to do that again. So that will be posted on our city website through Virtual City Hall. And we will be posting that from this Friday, January 10th, through February 10th. So, to all of our community members that are out there listening, please get on Virtual City Hall and provide us your input by taking that community satisfaction survey. If you are, if you're not an online person and you don't want to take it that way, we will have some copies here at City Hall, down, and down at the Transit Center, as well as the library, and the rec center will be available for pickup and drop off on those. So, we're looking forward to the results of that at the mid-February. And I believe that is my report. I do have the sales tax numbers for November, which was October. I believe I mentioned this at our last meeting, but just in case you wanted copies, I have copies for you. And we should have our December sales tax report at that February meeting. So, that is my report.
Any questions from council?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, I believe we're looking for a motion to go into executive session. Someone can read the motion, please.
I'll make a motion to convene an executive session for the purposes of discussing the lease of real property owned by the city, which is commonly known as the railroad parking lot, as permitted in CRS 24-6-402-4A.
Second, council discussion. Do you have real copies?
Counselor Noesworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Bateen?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brokey?
Yes.
And Mayor Yussa?
Yes.